I'll announce that this meeting's being taped by Area fifty-eight. If you would join me in... I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two little select few minutes, temporary session. August thirty-first and September seventh, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
We got a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second, yeah. That's okay.
It's only been two weeks.
It's the new, it's the new digs, we're not, not used to it.
Where am I?
That's it.
Who am I, why am I here?
Why am I here?
Alright, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Uh, move to affirm the approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number twenty-five for one hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred ten dollars and forty-three cents. Ambulance commitment nine four twenty-three to nine ten twenty-three for forty thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number twenty-six for four hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and thirty-five cents. Vendor warrant number twenty-seven for two hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred fifty dollars and forty-four cents. Withholding warrants number twenty-eight for one hundred fifty-one thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars and thirty-six cents.
Second.
Aye.
Uh, yes, so, uh, Steve Littlefield, our veterans agent, has been working on the hometown heroes. You see this in a lot of other communities, um, they'll have them, it's just, you know, hometown heroes. And it's banners that go up throughout town, so Steve had been working on this project. We were a little bit short on funding as it was funded all through donations. Uh, we just want to acknowledge, a lot of people came together, um, at the end and made some donations to push the project over the finish line. Uh, there was also an organization who donated, um, quite a large sum of money. And they previously operated a, um, an organization to assist veterans in the area. And then they moved out of state and they gave the balance of their funds in the organization to, um, Halifax to, to move forward with this project. So, so I wanted to recognize that and also, you know, tons of others who really stepped up to, um, make the project, uh, turn into fruition. Yes, exactly. The order has been placed, so the, the plan is to have them up prior to Veterans Day, have all of them up.
Now, would we take them down again, because we usually put up holidays in Halifax, right?
Yeah, I think, I think they'll be a seasonal, yeah.
It's awesome. A shout out to, uh, Mary Gravenese resident who put the call out that more funds were needed and, uh, that was, helped get the word out, so thank you to her.
Uh, yes, so, this was a project we had gone out to bid on, um, it's been in the works for a couple of years. The town had gone out to bid last year and did not receive any favorable bids, so we rebid it and we received a, a couple of bids. And the winning bid is with Cape Cod Builders, um, total contract amount of two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. So I would just ask the board to approve the contract, council has drafted it, um, so we can get started on the roof replacement and, um, renovations of the garage as well. Uh, I just need one signature here.
I'll move that we, uh, accept the, uh, construction contract with Cape Cod Builders for the highway department roof.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's actually two copies. Yeah, right there. And the next one is, uh, contract with, uh, Paul, Paul Prakita for, this is for the build-out of the maintenance, uh, garage. So currently our municipal maintenance department doesn't really have a dedicated shop, uh, they operate in a portion of the recycling center. So this would allow, uh, them to have, uh, a dedicated space within the recycling center where they can work and keep their tools laid out. The board had previously approved ARPA funding for this, but now that, um, we've gotten proposals, this is the actual contract for construction. And that's the amount of twenty-six thousand two hundred.
Yep, I will move that we, uh, approve the construction contract with, uh, Paul Prasada for the highway line.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chairman Green, I have two questions, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Frank Johnston, Elm Street, um, regarding the, um, replacement of the highway barn, how did the pricing of two eighty-nine come in? What was budgeted for that, are we above or below our budgets?
Uh, we're right at the budget, we're going to use twenty thousand dollars of chapter ninety funding to supplement the project.
And regarding the, um, building, uh, maintenance shop, that's going to be down to recycle center, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And how did you follow on that?
Under budget, we, we had estimated about thirty thousand dollars.
About thirty, okay, thank you.
They were doing some other work down there, um, but this will...
It's like segregated out.
Yeah, yep, they had started that aspect of it. Yes, so we have a surplus item from the Holmes Library, it's a Merlin Elite HD video magnifier. Um, it just no longer works, so they're looking to get rid of that in the library.
Second.
So we have, um, from the, uh, fire department, uh, request for the batements for July twenty-twenty-three, ninety-seven thousand three ninety-six.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a second, request for batements for the fire department ambulance service for August of twenty-twenty-three, one hundred twenty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. Make that motion also.
Second. No.
Alright, so, this is, um, the signature authority form, so anytime there is a non-department head that is put in place as a backup to sign, uh, payroll, the board usually just approves it, so this is for Maria Bumpus in the library department to, um, sign payroll in the absence of the library director. So it just requires the board's approval.
I'll make a motion to make, uh, Maria Bumpus the, uh, alternate signature for the library.
Second.
It's all good, it's the new digs.
Uh, yes, so as we've talked about, um, we will be holding a special town meeting, uh, for several items. One of them being, uh, the reclassification study that we are working on to implement those results. We also have the regional schools agreement, which is, um, next on our agenda. That has to be put and, uh, approved by all three towns by the end of the year, by December, um, thirtieth. And we also have the potential for some zoning changes, um, with the senior center complex that they're working on. So those are at least three items, so with that being said, um, I wanted to nail down a date with the board. Uh, so, what we are thinking is, we're targeting right now the week of December, let's see, it's December eleventh, the week of the eleventh. I, my suggestion would be the eleventh, just follow the Monday, um, schedule, but, you know, I think that week is probably the best week to do it. It gives everyone sufficient time to get things in place, but also, you know, your, work, it's kind of the last week before people get real busy with the holidays. So I, I think that's probably the, the better week to do it, is that week of the eleventh.
Cody could ask, do you foresee it being a multi-night, um, special?
No, no, definitely not.
Yep.
I mean, I would think we'll probably have, uh, six or seven articles.
Okay.
Okay, so you need a motion to set it there.
To have you have a conflict there, that's why it came up tonight, uh, we've already made arrangements to go away, have our flights already, tickets already paid for the fifth through the twelfth. So, uh, basically... If maybe, if you, if you thought for sure, uh, Cody, that it was going to be like just a one-night thing, then, you know, I'd say do it the fourth, the night before, because our flights are already booked for the fifth.
I wouldn't say let's do it the fourth, I think we're going to need all the time that we can, so, yeah, we could do the thirteenth or fourteenth.
Would that work, Thursday, the fourteenth?
Oh, sure, when we get back, yeah, that'd be fun.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, alright. We like to be different, all different.
Alright, uh, so, uh, I'll make the motion that we, uh, set the, uh, special town meeting for Thursday, December fourteenth. We got the, uh, elementary school.
I'll make a second.
Aye.
There you go.
Thursday, yeah, no worries.
No, don't worry about it.
It's okay.
Of course.
Uh, when does the warrant open?
Um, we'll open it at one of our next meetings, either the next meeting or the one afterwards.
That's, you gotta fix that.
Right?
Yeah, time's out too much.
Okay, uh, Silver Lake Regional School.
Uh, yes, so, I just wanted to provide an update to the board and the public. So it had been brought to our attention that the regional agreement that we have in place needs to be updated. It's a requirement from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The school committee had invited the board to, um, one or two meetings to discuss this. We received the most recent revised draft, uh, probably about two weeks ago. I sent that off to our council for their review, uh, our council did come back with a few, um, minor concerns. I've passed those along to, uh, the school committee and the superintendent, they are taking those under advisement. I've also asked, uh, Jill, the superintendent, to provide us with a couple of dates where she could actually come here and give a presentation, um, not only to the board, but I think it's very important for our residents to have an understanding of, of what this is, what the changes are. Uh, they can, they know it and they can explain it kind of a lot better than I would be able to or any of us would be able to. So I spoke with, uh, her today, and she's going to provide us with a couple of dates in the near future. Uh, I think they're, they're, it, this need, it has to pass for all three schools. It really comes down to, um, the way that the, the pre-K is set up right now. It had been run as a regional program, although it wasn't, uh, laid out as a regional program in, uh, actual agreement. So Desi came back and said, um, if you want to continue to run this, it needs to reflect accurately in the agreement. Uh, and there's some other changes, but I just wanted to give you that update that, we hope to have her in soon. We are the latter of the three towns for the town meetings, they are all, both having, um, town meetings. So, I think, you know, she's very busy trying to get those towns in and, and get everyone in, but, um, that's pretty much the update I have regarding that. It does.
The old one?
Oh, no, no.
That was, that was the crux of the problem.
That's the issue, yeah.
We were running it regionally without it being on our, our regional agreement.
So, yeah, thank you.
So we still just waiting, we already, you know, we've had somebody looking at it, now we just need to hear from the school committee what they, why I think it's a good idea, so we can actually, uh, address it at town meeting.
Right, and they'll absolutely, yeah, I've given them, um, the idea that our town meeting would be that week, they'll be available, they'll be there. And provide a presentation on it, yeah.
Okay, um, any more discussion?
No, no.
The, um, uh, town hall operating hours?
Yes, so you may recall earlier in the summer, um, I had brought before the board to do some, uh, basically a test run of some different operating hours here at town hall, uh, and the change was, you know, previously we had, um, town hall was open Monday through Thursday, seven to four, and then staff would work a half day on Friday, although the building wasn't open, um, to the public. So over the summer, um, offices have been open Monday through, well, Monday, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, seven to four-thirty, and then on Tuesdays until six-thirty, so you may notice a lot of the offices were open here when you came tonight. Um, and I wanted to, I put out a survey to, uh, everyone within town hall to gauge their feedback, um, on how we want to move forward with a permanent solution. So we offered, um, a few options of going back to how we had the hours before, uh, keeping the hours how they are now with the late Tuesday, or going to a Monday through Friday, kind of eight to four, and being open all day Friday, and then a no preference. And you'll see, this was as of, um, yesterday evening, um, we had, uh, we've had a total of sixteen, so seven, seventy-five percent, um, have given their feedback of wanting to stay with what we have now on a permanent solution. We did get, uh, nineteen percent looking to go back to the, um, hours previously, and we had a six percent say they have no preference. So I think, you know, with that being said, my recommendation would be to, you know, make the, the hours that we have now a permanent solution. Um, and if there's individual cases of concern, we can work with those employees.
Well, we can't tell, uh, like, the separately elected officials what to do anyway, so...
We can't tell them what to do, but we can tell them what to do with their office. So the board oversees town hall and all town hall operations, um, but everyone is really bought in to this, and I think that's one of the benefits of it. Because, you know, you, although you could receive pushback from elected offices, uh, the idea is to put us all on the same page.
How about the, uh, public, have we gotten any responses from the public, whether more or less accessible?
I mean, Tuesday nights haven't been very busy, we've had a few people come in, certainly not, um, a ton. I think people are still discovering that we're open Tuesday nights, um, but it's, it's, um, you know, even if we have five people, it's five more than we would've because we weren't open that late before and we were closed on Fridays.
Yeah, I like the fact that it's open later, at least we like, it's just more accessible.
Sure.
Fridays didn't make any difference anyway, because you don't get the door.
Right.
Yeah, I think it, I think it makes sense, I mean, I know there, there'll be folks that are, you know, you have the three folks that aren't on board, but, uh, seventy-five percent say it's a good thing, and like you say, John, it gives the, it gives the, the townsfolk time to come in after they're done working to get some stuff done, um, and also, I know part of it too was to give the employees Fridays off, um, which, you know, was a nice incentive as we were looking for employees to, to work at town hall, um, so that's a nice selling point too, so, it kind of marries both of those together nicely, so, um, I think I'd, I'd vote to keep this as a permanent solution.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything wrong with, with, like, the seventy-five percent, like you said, uh, I mean, having Friday off with a three-day weekend, that's a good, good incentive. And, well, the, that, that Tuesday being open till six-thirty, like, a lot of people get out, and then by the time they get out and get in their car and get here, you're closed, so... Having that late night one is, is great.
Yeah.
So everyone can get here.
Um, Darlene, you can, uh, council and engineer director, um, with that being said, and it does apply to this, I mean, we talked about the COA itself and offered that opportunity for the staff there, however, we find that the, uh, needs here are mostly on Fridays, you know, rides to shopping, simple things in life. So we can't really adhere to that type of a schedule just yet, perhaps maybe in the future when we go to a bigger center, um, we will be able to open up, uh, on a Tuesday evening to offer, um, you know, other events or community event things and be there in the evening. But for us to be there till like six-thirty, seven o'clock without, you know, most of the seniors, uh, programs are usually in the mornings, they're late afternoons, typically not. So, for us as a, you know, entity of, a part of your, you know, the, the town of Halifax, you know, other than work, for us just yet, but I see in the future.
I think the, uh, first of all, this doesn't apply to you anyway.
Okay.
No, this is just town, we had talked about this, Darlene, this was just town hall.
But I think, you know, your program is different than the football program, it's just so, just like the highway department's different, or the wine department. So this is just the, you know, administrative offices here.
You're definitely part of the family. Yes, yes, absolutely. Yep.
Okay, uh, so we want a motion to, uh, approve the...
Yeah, permanent operating hours.
Okay, um, it's okay, I'll make that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, so we, you had discussed it, John and I had discussed it previously, and then it was brought up at the last meeting, um, and verbally kind of approved, but I wanted to document it, so you should have it, and here's a copy for you, John, uh, just want to, if the board just wants to look it over, uh, make sure that, I mean, I, I went by what was said in the meeting, but I thought it was important to just write it all down.
It's a great idea.
And that way there we can...
I'll just reiterate it so everybody hears it again, uh, and this is, we're just, we're, this is, uh, another experiment, we're trying this out to see if it helps us, uh, make this, uh, expected, uh, earth removal permit, uh, uh, process, uh, work out and, uh, efficiently and, uh, without controversy if at all possible. And by the way, we, we haven't gotten a permit application yet.
We have not.
Okay, alright, so, this was brought forward by the Morse Brothers perm, uh, earth removal permit application, which we still don't have. But if we ever do get it, uh, so, this is the recommendation that, uh, prior to the start of the meeting, we will have signup sheets available for the public to complete, indicating their desire to speak at the meeting. Public hearing will be opened by the board of selectmen, and the applicant will have, the applicant will have the first opportunity to present their application and arguments to the board, uh, the board will then call on department heads and/or their designees to provide feedback on a proposed project. After the town departments have had the opportunities to weigh in, the chair will open the floor to the public, and we will call the names in order of how they appear on the signup sheet. Speakers will be given three minutes in order to get their point across to the board. Once all individuals sign up on the sheet and have an opportunity to speak, the chair will open it for members of the audience who have not yet had the opportunity to speak, or for additional comments by those who have, and additional comments will be limited to two minutes. So, and then the goal of the defined procedures is to maintain an orderly process while giving everyone a chance to voice an opinion. Uh, the, uh, chair of the board of selectmen reserves the right to vary this set of procedures and can allow members of the board to speak in a tongue. And I, that, that's a good point we hadn't talked about, I, I don't intend to troll you guys.
Thank you.
That is not the point here, the point is, um, I, I think, you know, assuming it's hap, we get what we have in the past with these earth removal permits, a big crowd, everybody wants to say something, I just want to do it orderly, uh, but, but, but the board, I think, is outside of that. Since you're, we, you guys have, we have, the three of us have to decide it, so you should have that opportunity to ask any question if anybody want to.
Sure.
It's just, I want to make sure that I don't have to listen to the same person over and over and over again, getting up and saying, I want to say it again, right, over and over and over again. Alright, uh, do you want to, uh, would you vote to adopt it, or we already did that?
You voted to adopt it at the last meeting, I just wanted to put the pen to paper and, and just make sure we're all in agreement that this is what you voted. And that way there, um, you know, we can, we'll have it, we can, if we want, if we get an application prior to the public hearing, we can even post this on the website, just so people know coming in, this is, this is the procedure.
And it, and I think it's important for the public to know, we're not looking to limit people's ability to speak. We're, we're looking to keep it orderly, and we're lucky, I will say, I'll toot your horn, you do a great job of keeping things going, keeping the train chugging along sometimes. You know, so, um, I just think it makes sense to have these set of rules so that it eliminates, it eliminates some of the chaos.
Yeah, you know what happens, it'll happen, it always does, yeah, like at town meeting, you see it all the time, you know, somebody keeps raising their hand, I want to talk, I want to talk, you know, I got to do this one, this one, this one, this one. This way, we have, we have a list, right?
Yeah. Frank Johnston.
Frank gets to go first, Darlene gets to go second.
Well, I'm going to start.
All the way down the line, and then when we get everybody that's taken the opportunity to sign up, uh, and somebody wants to say something else, then we'll go back to them.
Yeah.
And I don't intend to, you know, I, I, it's an arbitrary number, three minutes, but that's just so we don't get rambling on.
And I think you can make your point in three minutes.
I think so.
I would, I would hope.
Yeah, I don't think anyone goes over three minutes unless they're trying to throw in different laws and...
That's all, that's all, it's just an opportu, just to hope, hopefully make it work.
A little smoother, yeah, no, I think it's fantastic.
No one will be jumping all, all over everyone, it'll be a...
And you, like you say, it's, we're just trying to...
A little bit more civil.
So...
We'll see how, we'll see how it works.
I mean, I think we need to make rational decisions, and it seems to me that that's how we do it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, thank you.
Mr. Green, I have a question, um, Frank Johnston, Elm Street, so has Morse Brothers ceased moving dirt or sand prior to this permit?
I don't think that anything's going on over there.
As far as we are aware.
So, they're going to pull a permit and then start a X amount of material based on what your permit is?
Right.
So, so it's not going to be hauling between now and when a permit is issued?
Unless they're hauling their granberries.
Well, I'll talk about sand over there, the excavation activities.
They're not supposed to be.
Right.
Shouldn't be removing, yep.
They shouldn't be doing any more of that over there.
Unless it's...
Discussions with, our, our town councils, talked to their lawyer, they've, they've agreed that, uh, they need a permit, so assume they're going to follow through. In my, my dealings, I know everybody has their own opinion about them, but in my dealings with them in the last six months, um, you know, they've been pretty above board. I mean, I haven't, I haven't seen anything that's not, they, they obviously have their interests, you know, and I don't blame them, and they're going to, you know, aggressively press, press on them, they should, but, but so far they've been, at least as far as I've had to deal with them, pretty, uh, pretty easy to deal with them in that regard, you don't overgraze the skirt, but... Alright, uh, next up is ARPA, uh, ARPA, ARPA.
Uh, yeah, so this is, the board, uh, previous board had approved four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for funding of the water treatment plant upgrades. Um, and, like, it was an oversight, we thought that it had been six hundred thousand, we had been accounting for six hundred thousand, so we just need a formal vote of the board to approve six hundred thousand instead of four hundred and fifty thousand for the water treatment plant upgrades for the ARPA project.
Frank Johnston, Elm Street. Sorry, um, so we're only really looking for an additional hundred and fifty thousand to the fourth, four hundred fifty thousand? We're not looking for an additional six hundred on top of the four fifty?
No, correct.
Okay, so really looking to approve an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So, um, can you just give us a brief explanation of what the ARPA funding is, how much we have, and...
So this is the, uh, yep, this is the American Rescue Plan Act funding, uh, that came from the federal government as a result, uh, basically a stimulus to municipalities, cities, counties across the country, uh, as a result of the COVID pandemic. So, uh, the town received probably in total around two million dollars, um, a lot of that has been allocated, this board had allocated some, previous board had allocated some of that, um, and we had been accounting for six hundred thousand in, in that for this project. You know, the funds, basically municipalities, po, part of our funding went directly to the town, and then part of ours went to the county. Uh, the funding that came to the town did not have a, um, specified use, as you could use it, um, there was different categories, one of those was revenue replacement. So we use the funding that came to the town as revenue replacement, which allowed us to complete various projects such as the build-out of the maintenance, kind of new furniture around town hall, to, tons of different things, um, staff bonuses a couple of years ago. So, and then the portion that came from the county, um, was more designated for the purposes that the federal government had laid out in addition to revenue replacement, uh, which was broadband, um, water, sewer infrastructure are kind of the big ones. So this falls in line directly with the water infrastructure, um, and we had previously approved, um, a few hundred thousand dollars for the, uh, Silver Lake, for the HVAC upgrades, the county commissioners had come out and given us that funding. So this is, um, additional funding that will go through the county for, rather than the ones that we got through the town directly. This is the project that town meeting had approved, uh, in May, that we borrowed for, for the approximately, uh, two million dollars, I believe it was. So this is, um, this really results in us having to borrow less money, um, so it's a, it's a good thing.
And this is for the Richmond Park wells?
It's the Richmond Park and the Y Camp, both.
Oh, and Y.
And these were, uh, upgrades that we've needed to make for, for a while?
Yes.
For quite some time.
We're under administrative order from the EPA.
So, got to, got to do it sooner rather than later.
And we have awarded the contract for those, once we got the town meeting approval, we awarded the contract, and we've applied for the, uh, sixth, uh, funding from the county. And then in that process, we realized that we never, uh, got cert, approval from the board for the six hundred thousand, we only got the four hundred and fifty, so, that's what brings us here today.
Okay, uh, how do you want the motion to be?
Uh, just a motion to allocate six hundred thousand dollars in ARPA funding for water treatment plant upgrades.
So I'll make that motion, do we have a second?
Second? Yeah, go ahead, nod your second.
I'll second that.
I don't want to take all the seconds.
You like to take the second.
I, I'm, look at me, I eat seconds, that's how it is.
I wasn't setting it that way.
I know, I know, having met seconds, I haven't liked.
He just wants to prove he's here when he sees the minutes.
That's it.
Pam put me down for that one, alright, cut.
Alright, any further discussion?
Aside seconds, no.
You know, I'm just going to put my phone here on speaker next time, be like, alright. Aye.
Uh, Council on Aging, so, um, we did get a, a request, um, this name last week.
No, I know.
From Mrs. Reagan about, uh, support for a Council on Aging grant.
No, that's right.
Um, it was very time-sensitive, so, uh, we had to get the letter out before we could have a meeting. Uh, we did draft the letter, uh, I think everybody's seen it.
Yep.
Um, and so I guess we just, um, for a minute, that'll be good.
Yeah, I thought it would be good to have, um, Darlene in to give an overview of the program. Darlene and I met last week, and she had provided me an update, and it's a really exciting opportunity. Uh, and since the board was supportive of it, I think it was good to have her come in and kind of showcase the work she's doing over there and specifically with this project, so.
Great idea.
Um, Darlene Reagan, uh, Director for the Halifax Council on Aging. Um, we were approached by the Executive Office of Other Affairs in terms of the bidding, um, for the hybrid program for Council on Aging. Um, so we got the, uh, we were told about the, uh, opportunity in August. So, um, Bridgewater reached out to us, which was awesome. Um, they have, uh, a lot of big kind, um, uh, parks to sort of, uh, items that will be able to be supportive of rural, smaller towns. So we collaborated, and, uh, we applied for the grant on, uh, just yesterday, uh, September twenty-fifth, right? Uh, and, um, each, each of us would be awarded, if funded, would be awarded a hundred thousand dollars to support, uh, dementia care programs, or onset dementia, that is. Um, it would be a collaborative program, it would be hybrid program, it would be a minimum of six people per, you know, per its town. Um, and it would run six weeks, so, um, it's a model that we wanted to share, um, with other, you know, if it goes well, um, if it will. Um, it'll be a model that we can all share with other COAs. So, um, we got a lot of support, uh, from our state senator, from our state representatives, um, as well as Old Colony Planning Council, so they're there for us. And as a small community, it's something that we can offer, um, you know, to a, a lot of the caregivers as well as the individuals. So, um, you know, I, I just wanted to, um, you know, participate in that program and other programs that are coming up. That's how we're funded, we're not funded by, we're, so funded by the town as well, but we also, I mean, most of our grant, you know, our money's from the grants that we buy. Uh, Mass Cultural Council is another that, you know, another grant that we, um, look forward to, um, you know, inviting into our lives and, and giving it, you know, giving it back to our community. So this opportunity, if, um, it becomes a model for others, it's, it's gonna be a, a real goal, you know, a positive thing for Halifax. And, uh, I am thankful to Bridgewater for coming forward because they, um, of course, of course, the center is larger, but they also have a lot of, um, you know, um, programs that, um, will be supportive of what we do in transportation. So the cost of everything is gonna be all, it's all built into the, um, to, into the grant itself, as you can see. Um, so we applied for two hundred thousand dollars, as, uh, like I mentioned, that each town would be, uh, awarded a hundred thousand each. And, uh, transportation, any of the, um, uh, hiring of interns and, um, actually a programs person will come from the grant. So the not, the town would not be funding anything, and, um, so.
Can you, um, can you just tell us what the program is?
Yes, it's, uh, sorry, um, it's a hybrid program that, um, with, depending on the individual and how they wanna approach it, um, it would give the opportunity for homebound people to have some type of programming at home. Um, we are gonna be purchasing an owl, which is, it's a teleconferencing. Um, and we would also have tablets to provide to individuals while they're at home. We forget about the fact that there are some people that can't make it to the center, um, and for various reasons. So we wanna be supportive of not just, um, people that come to visit us on a daily basis, but those who are at home as well. And a lot of the caregivers today are dealing with a lot of that, I call the Orio generation, dealing with, um, you know, their, their own children, their own, their working lives, as well as, you know, aging parents or a loved one. And I think that's our new gen, you know, that's where we gotta go, we gotta be progressive, we gotta think smart, we gotta, the opportunities are there. And for us to take advantage of what's offered to us at the executive level, the executive office of, of other affairs is offering all this funding, it's almost a new realm. So I think, um, looking to the future, I think if this program is, um, work, works for us, it's gonna off, open up a lot, a lot of opportunities for other COAs to take on, and the Executive Office of Other Affairs. If it's in with what they want, um, us to do, and that's who going to fund us, so.
Murals, quickly, thank you.
Hmm.
It's awesome.
Thank you for the letters.
Oh, of course.
Short moves.
Glad to do it.
We gotta move quick.
Glad to do it.
Okay, um, updates on the MBTA action plan for the Morse Brothers, great?
Uh, I have no new updates on any of those.
Yeah, how about you?
Uh, so we've had several things taking place here in town hall. First, obviously, we've, uh, our office moves have taken place, as you can see, we're here in our new meeting room. Uh, everyone's still adjusting into their, right, new offices, but, um, you know, the building maintenance department has been excellent. Uh, a lot of work that they've put in, a lot of, you know, overtime, weekend hours, so very thankful for them. And Caesar and our IT department as well has been very hands-on, making sure everyone's equipment has been working, so, um, big shout-out to them and a thank you to them. Uh, we submitted a Community Compact IT Grant last week for approximately eighty thousand dollars to facilitate online licensing and permitting, so we'll hear back from the state, uh, probably sometime in November, but that grant was submitted. Um, back in May, the board, uh, at my request, had requested the Department of Revenue conduct a financial management review. Um, so the Department of Revenue contacted me on Friday to let me know that they will be starting tomorrow. Um, so they're coming in tomorrow, they're meeting with a number of our key staff members, uh, with, with in-person interviews, and then I'll be working with some of our, uh, additional staff members, including you, Mr. Bruno, uh, where they'll set up virtual meetings, um, to meet one-on-one with, with several, um, other members of our team. Um, Green?
Next week, or is that some other time?
No, it'll be some other time, I'll let you know when we'll facilitate. Since, um, those ones are Zoom, they can really be done, the, the full study will take probably a month or so, so any time within that, but we'll work with everyone once, um, I speak with them. Um, we also submitted our Green Communities Grant Report, so we received a Green Communities Grant last year. We closed out that grant, uh, and we have to submit a report that accompanies that. So Old Colony Planning Council assisted us with that, and then also, uh, Scott Materna, our Building Maintenance Director, and Sandy Knoll, our Town Accountant. Uh, we got that out, and we received a favorable review from the Department of Energy Resources. Uh, that was for several projects, including the fire and water department HVAC upgrades. We also did some insulation and weatherization here at town hall, um, and what virtually costed the town, you know, us no money, uh, for these projects that save energy, and not only, um, the projects were, you know, funded by them, but also result in savings in our energy bills, which is always a positive. Um, our stormwater management team has been working tirelessly to get our annual reporting done, so we have a consultant. Uh, VHB is our consultant. Uh, so Bob Valerie, Steve Hayward, Peggy Seltzer, on behalf of the Conservation Commission, and myself have been meeting, um, with VHB, we have our annual report complete. Uh, and we ho- hope to get the final report to the EPA and the DP, DEP la- later this week. But again, you know, kudos to them for, um, working, working on that. And then last but not least, we, um, through our ARPA funding, the board had approved, um, some, some funding for an IT consultant to come in. So, uh, the first part of that has been complete, we had a company come in and do, uh, an IT assessment on where we are, uh, with our IT equipment. Uh, it was blind to the staff, which was great because nobody knew it was coming. And, you know, he went around and did, uh, some security checks, and, um, the staff all responded very well in how they should respond, which is exactly what you want. So, uh, I'll take, um, you know, the next couple of weeks and review that, and, um, we'll go from there and work to implement some efficiencies that come as a result of that. And that is it.
There you go, sounds good.
On a, uh, you mentioned the word important, made me to remember, um, I think our, uh, annual reports are all due by February?
They usually do by like, uh, middle of January.
Middle of January, okay, so, and like, our next agenda, uh, just put on there a reminder, um, I, I don't mind writing it, but I'd like to have input from everybody about what, what we did this year.
Okay.
If I forgot something, and then, uh, I'll try to get it drafted before Christmas, so we can get it moving.
Well, no one answers to me about it, I'm still, you know, asking for it, like, my agenda.
Well, we're gonna be on, we're gonna set the standard.
That's it.
We go, yeah.
Changes.
Okay, uh, anything else to, to take up?
No.
Except for an executive session, so, I will move that we enter into executive session pursuant to General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, in the, uh, elected meeting room, and will not reconvene an open session for discussion, uh, discussing the quality of contract negotiations, Local Seven Three Hundred, Massachusetts State Council Ninety-Three, American Federation of State County Municipalities, AFL-CIO, Halifax Next Unit, uh, and pursuant to General Law Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One Eighty-Three, uh, discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining in an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the party position of the town. So we'll have a second.
Second.
Okay, um, Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Sealing?
Yes.
I vote yes, so we'll go into, uh, executive session, thank you all.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks.